He's a lawyer, he shouldn't be able to handle it.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Wednesday, May 9th, meeting of the Chelmsford Planning Board. As always, we're being recorded by Chelmsford Telemedia. So, you know, smile if the camera swings toward you. Let's see. We have one new public hearing tonight, but rather than do that immediately, I'm hoping that Tim makes it in. So why don't we take a look at the one set of meeting minutes that we have?
March 28.
Five twenty-eight. Has everybody had a chance to look it over? I'm good.
Did you like a motion, Mr. Chair?
I would love a motion.
Okay, we'll make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes of five twenty, it's not five twenty-eight, March 28, 2018.
Second. Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, that takes care of the minutes.
Make sure that's five, because I wasn't on that.
Okay, yeah, that's five zip, one extension. Oh, and here comes a meeting for the material for the public hearing. Yes.
Yeah, tell them.
You haven't heard anything from Tim, have you? Okay, well then...
I can check by... This is the letters for...
Okay, I will read.
Okay, well, let me start by opening up the public hearing.
Okay.
We have a public hearing on 27 Katrina Road. It's a project proposing a two-story, 14,000-square-foot building, 45 vehicles, 69 bus parking spaces, et cetera, et cetera.
Let me read the legal notes.
Yes.
Okay, "Chelmsford Planning Board will conduct the public hearing on Wednesday, May 9, 2018 at 7:00 PM at the Chelmsford Town Office's 50 Belrika Road, Room 204, to consider applications submitted by J.J. McCarthy, LLC for property located at 27 Katrina Road, MAP 52, Block 234, Lot 2. The property is located in a limited industrial zoning district. The project proposes a two-story, 14,000-square-foot building, 45-vehicle parking spaces, and 69 bus parking spaces, and associated site improvements for purposes of operating a school bus transportation and maintenance facility. Applicant requests site plan approval, Section 195-104, and special permits 195-21H and 195-44A, B, and C, and any other relief that may be deemed necessary. Usual boilerplate copies of the proposal are available in Community Development Department, Room LL01, Town Office's 50 Belrika Road. All interested parties are invited to comment in writing or may present relevant information for consideration at the public hearing on Wednesday, May 9, 2018." Brought to you by the Chair, Mike Raismack. Thank you. Okay, you want me to read through all the letters, Mike?
Yeah, I guess we'd better.
Okay.
All right. Do a couple if you get tired of it.
Yeah, let me see how long they are. Let me start. Okay, this is from the DPW, Christina Papadopoulos. Dear members, this office has reviewed the site plans by JM Associates, consisting of five sheets dated April 11, 2018, and drainage report dated April 10, 2018. As a result of this review, this office has the following comments. The department shall be notified when work on-site is to commence and order to arrange for inspections. Two, any revisions to drainage systems shall be submitted and approved by this office. Three, storm water operation and maintenance plan shall be submitted and followed as described in the report. Copies of inspections and other reports done in accordance with the plan shall be forwarded to the engineering office. Four, grass swales and catch basins are critical to mitigating the runoffs off-site. The operators must commit to regularly maintaining them by mowing the grass and not allowing trash to accumulate. Sediment accumulation in the catch basins will diminish the effectiveness of the swales. Catch basins must be cleaned out regularly. Five, a site as built shall be provided upon completion of the work on-site as built to include a letter from the engineer stating that all stormwater devices have been built as designed. Provide all supporting documents and calculations. As-built shall be from a ground survey and submitted in AutoCAD and paper form." Okay, six, "This project requires NEPTES Construction General Permit. Final copy of the Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan must be submitted to the town as well as filed with EPA prior to beginning any site work." Seven, "The proposed sewer work will require permitting from the DPW Sewer Division for connection to the municipal sewer system." Eight, "Road opening permit is required from the Chelmsford DPW Highway Division for work within the Katrina Road right-of-way." Nine, "Trans permit shall be filed as per 520 CMR 14, Chapter 82." Design engineer has received design drafting review comments from this office." Call if you have any questions, Christina Papadopoulos. Okay. What is this? No comment, this is from... Oh, wait a second, see attached letter. Okay, this is from the Police Department, Lieutenant Colin Spence. Vision of special services has reviewed the attached site plan and request for site plan approval and special permits for 27 Katrina Road from the Town of Chelmsford Planning Board. Upon careful review of the plans, there is only one marked handicap parking space. Per Americans with Disabilities Regulation, one handicap space is required per 25 spaces, whereas the current plan calls for 45 parking spaces, two marked handicap spaces are required. If you have any questions, please call me. Excuse me. Okay. This is from the Center of Water District. Okay, another letter. Center of Water District has some concerns with this project regarding the looks of the abandoned... Excuse me. Let me start over again. "The Chelmsford Water District has some concerns with this project regarding what looks to be the abandonment of the existing six-inch fire line. A representative for the proposed project should contact the Chelmsford Water District. Water conditioners upon approval of the proposed project would request the following three to be part of the order of conditions. Waters for domestic use only. Water-saving devices should be utilized throughout the facility. Zeriscaping landscaping should be implemented to minimize water usage. Richard Tancino, Distribution Manager..." Okay, can you read this one?
Sure. Okay. This is Chelmsford Fire Prevention. "Replanning Board File for 27 Katrina Road. Dear Members of the Board, concerning the proposed bus storage facility and building proposed at 27 Katrina Road, the Fire Prevention Office finds the following. Water supply appears to be adequate. The required pressure and flow shall be confirmed by a current water flow test performed proximate to the site with all calculations submitted to this department for review and approval. Hydrant locations shown on this plan are inadequate as currently proposed. The Chelmsford Fire Department requires a hydrant within 60 feet of the fire department connection and a hydrant within 500 feet for manual firefighting operations. Hydrants and fire prevention equipment shall be free from landscaping obstruction. The hydrant located on the Katrina Road cul-de-sac cannot be used for fire department connection purposes because it is located behind the property's fence from the building in question. The applicant has the option of adding another hydrant to the plan to comply with the 60-foot to FDC requirement or relocating a hydrant on-site to comply with this requirement. Access firefighting apparatus and emergency vehicles shown on the plan is adequate. All fire lanes shall be marked with appropriate pavement markings and/or approved signage. Fire access roads and turnarounds are acceptable to the Fire Prevention Office. Said roads were designed with swept path analysis using the Ashtow Bus 45 turning template and were submitted previously to this department. Fire apparatus access shall be designed to withstand the weight of fire apparatus. Snow storage shall not obstruct or impede fire access roads or turnaround. All exits from the building shall have paved access to allow a continuous path from the exit that leads to a public way. Any manually operated vehicle access gates to the property shall be secured with a NOX padlock keyed to the Chelmsford Fire Department requirements. If automatic gates are used, such gates shall require the use of a NOX key switch. The dumpster location shown on this plan is adequate. An automatic sprinkler system conforming to NFPA 13 and a fire alarm system conforming to NFPA 72 shall be required. Both systems shall be monitored by a UL-approved Central Station Monitoring Service, and all components and fire protection systems must comply with the State Building Code and Chelmsford Fire Department requirements. Three sets of sprinkler and fire alarm plans, along with supporting documentation, must be submitted to the Fire Prevention Office for review prior to the approval of building plans. All equipment related to fire safety shall be located at the discretion of the Chelmsford Fire Department. Testing for compliance with emergency responder radio coverage shall also be required as construction of the building nears completion. The applicant must submit an application to the Town of Chelmsford E-911 Committee for address through its coordinator, Town Clerk Tricia Tsouris. This office will approve of this plan with these conditions and changes, and I ask the Board to make this letter a part of their approval process. Respectfully submitted. Daniel J., Hoots Office."
Okay, let me continue. Let me take those. Thank you. Okay, this is from the Board of Health, Susan Ann Rosa, RN. Okay. "In reference to the request by J.J. McCarthy, LLC, 27 Katrina Road, to waive the requirement to enclose the dumpster..." This is a new paragraph. "...per Board of Health general provisions, Chapter 201 Regulations Regarding Commercial Refuse and Dumpster Collection Licensing and Operations, Section 201-20B, all dumpsters must be enclosed or screened as required by the Board of Health. Dumpsters must be placed on an impervious pad, asphalt or cement..." Next paragraph. "This regulation will not be waived by the Board of Health. The applicant will be required to submit an application for a dumpster permit as well as to enclose the dumpster per regulations. I have attached a copy of regulations for your reference." Let me ask, do you have copies of all these letters, sir?
I just got them.
Okay. I'm not going to read these regulations for the dumpsters, but you've got a copy of Chapter 201 for the dumpster regulations by the Board of Health. And I'll just note that we're entering them into the record. That's it?
That's it.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Very good. All right, well, I guess we get to hear from the proponent.
Good evening. My name is Jack McWilkin. I'm a registered engineer for JM Associates. And I'm here with John McCarthy, the applicant. Do I bring these plans up front, or do we work off of the screen? How do you... It's my first time here.
Your plans didn't come through in pretty color, but I can flip through them. Are those new ones now?
Yes.
I should do that. I'll do as best as I can if you can...
Put them up here?
Yeah.
Well, I think we've got copies, anyway.
Yeah. Why don't you put these in the file for me? Can you reach over?
I can actually bear a blank if you want me to point.
Yeah. Can you do this?
That's actually good. That's going to take care of that. Thank you.
Do I have to stand back here?
You've got to be on the microphone so it can be recorded.
Pick the mic up towards you.
Yeah.
Tip the mic towards you. There you go.
There you go, it's got to be recorded.
I'm talking the general direction, it'll pick you up.
It's going to be a little tricky.
There you go.
Okay, so this parcel is a three-acre parcel. It's bounded on the south by Katrina Road, on the north by the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. Basically, industrial buildings on the east and west side. Let me just flip over. The existing site is, it's basically a vacant site. There is a large concrete slab in the middle of the site that was the former building. Pretty much, the rest of the surface is, it's actually about 80% impervious now, and then there's about 20% that's basically scrub brush, weeds, brush, things like that. It's a brownfield site. It's topography is pretty flat. It ranges from an elevation about 111 in the back along the rail trail to about 108, 107 at the Katrina Road entrance, and also at the, there's an existing right-of-way that's also access to the site. And that's kind of a low point, too. There is a remediation area on the site that's going to be treated by the environmental company, and that's shown here in this. This outlines pretty much in the center of the site. There's no wetlands on the site. There are two wetland areas off-site. One to the east by the detention pond on the Carey property, and one to the northwest, just on the other side of the rail trail. This is a small portion of the site that's in the 200-foot riverfront zone, and it's also in the 100-foot flood plain. The proposed development is basically a 14,000-square-foot building, 50 by 140. There'll be 69 parking spaces for school buses. We've got 45 parking spaces for employees and drivers. We'll be creating three grass swales along the edges of the property on the north, south, and west side. We're not creating any new impervious areas. In fact, we'll be actually about 5% less impervious because we're taking up pavement where we're putting the grass swales. So we've got a snow storage area. It's about 6,400 square feet, and if John needs that for snow storage, he'll relocate those buses to another site. The topography that's proposed, we're pretty much going to keep the same topography around the edges of the site. We're going to raise up the middle about two feet over the slab to give us some better It's going to run off into the swales on the three sides. The swales are going to discharge into deep sump catch basins at each end, and they're going to discharge into a drain manhole, which is going to discharge into the municipal sewer system out at the cul-de-sac. We're also putting in a gravel diaphragm on the west side. We can't really get a swale over there because it's high up. You can't really get the water to the swale. But we are putting a gravel diaphragm at the low spot to just catch some of this water and treat it slightly just before it goes off-site. It'll go off-site into a, this is an existing detention pond on the Carey property. We've also added a oil and grease separator for the floor drains, which will tie into the proposed sewer service. As far as drainage, we basically separated the site, the existing site, into three subcatchments. Subcatchment 1 discharges to the west and basically into almost a swale that's there now on the west side. This all goes out to Katrina Road. Subcatchment 2 goes to the south, basically onto the property of, I guess it's Chadwick Borrowes, Inc. And then Subcatchment 3 sheds to the west and onto the, basically into the detention pond on the Carey property. And then our proposed drainage, pretty much the same idea, the subcatchments are a little bit different. But again, we've got Subcatchment 1, which goes west, and then down the swale into Katrina Road. Subcatchment 2 goes shed south again, but now it gets caught by this swale and actually gets carried out again to the Katrina Road system. Subcatchment 3 still sheds off to the detention pond, but we've been able to reduce the runoff rate so it's slightly, actually less. All the runoff rates in the two, 10, 25, and 100-year storms are all equal to or less than the existing. And that's pretty much the project.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Who wants to go first?
I'll go.
You're on, huh?
And I'll come back, too, if you don't mind me. So, the building that's going to be there is the, off to the right, we just got these plans a few minutes ago. Where's the building that's going to be? Where is the building going to be?
That building is right here.
Okay. So the rest is essentially a giant parking lot?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. I'll ask the easy question first. I thought that we were supposed to infiltrate all water so there was not, no runoff from the site. And what you're doing is you're putting it into the municipal sewer system. Can you tell me a little bit about that?
Well, I believe that the regulation is that you can put an equal amount as what's going there now or less. And that's what we're doing. That's what we've shown in our drainage report.
Okay, just a comment. I just don't usually like that. Just like, you produce the water, you keep the water. Okay. Was this a superfund site at one time, or is it a superfund site?
I believe it is.
If I may, with us tonight is Tracy Costa, the Town's LSP. Tracy's been with this project, working for the Town, not the developer, for inception, almost eight, 10 years.
Yes.
So we invited Tracy tonight, as I said. She's been with the Town on the Town's cleanup side. She's also reviewed these development plans at my request, and we've invited her with the anticipation that the Board would likely have some questions related to cleanup. So Tracy can provide some high-level history or detailed explanation?
Yeah, let's hear the story.
Why don't I ask Tracy, are you a Town employee, or do you work for an engineering outfit?
I work for an engineering firm called Ransom Consulting.
Okay.
Okay. And you're a licensed, Mass. licensed LSP?
I am, yes.
Registered civil engineer, I assume?
No, no, no. I'm an environmental scientist, but I am a licensed site professional.
Okay. Tell us the, tell me, or tell us the status of this as a superfund site and as it relates to its AOL or where it stands under the Mass. contingency plan.
Absolutely. So it is a Massachusetts contingency plan, an MCP disposal site. It is not a superfund site regulated under the EPA. It's regulated under Mass. DEP.
Okay.
And it has been an MCP, or Massachusetts contingency plan disposal site, since the mid-'80s. And the reason for that is the former STC property owners or occupants used to discharge their waste. If you look at the figure, let me have it up. There was, so there was a discharge pipe along the northeastern portion of the building, and literally, the waste used to discharge to an open basin, and that was mainly comprised of chlorinated solvents and some petroleum. What that caused the waste to do, chlorinated solvents are heavier than water, so there's a tendency of them to sink. So literally, the waste sunk down, it's still beneath the building, went down into the sandy soils and migrated toward a southeastern direction underneath, past Katrina Road, beyond 495. It has not impacted the drinking water wells. So there have been investigations conducted at the site between 1987 and 2013 by multiple consultants. And based on that, the determination was certainly remediation had to be conducted. So in terms of determining which was the best type of remediation to conduct, a bench-scale treatability study was done and a pilot test. And based on the results of that, chemical oxidation and institute bio remediation are really the best options. So Mass. Development is going to fund the cleanup on behalf of the Town over a 24-month period. And subsequent to that, the new owner will be monitoring the groundwater for 20 years. And the reason for that is because the site is located in a GW1 area, and that really requires low concentration or low standards for some of those chlorinated solvents. And in addition to that, the building will be retrofitted with a subslab depressurization system and a vapor barrier. But again, the slab needs to remain in place to avoid infiltration of rainwater, because that will have an impact on the plume.
Okay. All right. A whole bunch of other questions, but let me, so I understand a little bit better. This is towards Evan. Who owns the land now, and are we going to, is the Town selling it to Mr. McCarthy, leasing it to him? Or what's the game plan here?
So the Town has already issued a RFP to sell the property. Mr. McCarthy won that award. And part of the agreement between Mass. Development, the Town, and the developer is that, once the project is permitted, the Town will retain ownership during the cleanup. However, Mr. McCarthy, once building permits are issued, would be allowed to move forward on the areas of development that do not prevent the cleanup to take place.
Okay. So basically, you can put the building up?
Yep. Correct, correct. So there'll be coordination between the LSP and the vendors that do the cleanup, as well as Mr. McCarthy.
Okay, so I, thank you. So I understand a little bit better, between, the question is between you two. The slab's going to stay. What's the game plan? We're bringing dirt in to cover the slab, or we're just going to put asphalt on it?
Yeah, the slab in the, basically in the center's going to get raised up by about two feet, and then at the edges, it's pretty much going to stay where it is now, at the elevation that it is now.
So you're just going to cover it with dirt and then put asphalt on it, eh?
Yes.
Okay, because the LSP was saying, no disturbing the slab.
No, so in other words, the slab can't be removed. But we're going to be working, no, it just, it just can't...
We're putting more material on top.
Yeah, so it just...
That's what I'm saying, you're going to put dirt on it.
Which is bad.
But it can't be, it can't be demolished and broken up. I guess that's really what I, it needs to, yeah.
Which is, which is one of the reasons why we decided, the safest place, excuse me, to move the building where we decide to put it. It was the cleanest place to put the building, and that's why we did the cap intact and actually bring the building up and the property up at the same, at the same point, so it will look right. And you won't be looking at this big ugly slab, you'll be looking at a piece of property that is, you know, it's paved now, it'll just be nicely paved.
Fine. Final question, and you don't have to answer it now, but this is between the LSP and Christina, I guess. When you guys look at this, is their site drainage the best way for this site? And you guys can come back to us later and tell us what you think about the water infiltration and running it into the sewer system. The reason I'm saying that is I don't think we're going to be done tonight.
No, I doubt it.
No.
Those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Very good.
All right, I'll jump in next. I'm going to jump right in on what Ed was saying about the drainage. I'm not a big fan of this drainage system. I don't like the part that it's getting dumped into the town's drainage. And it's going right, that, that just dumps right across the street into the canal across the street. So if there's any contaminants in the ground that get into that, they're going to be dumping right into the... I'm just not a fan of the drainage part of it. I think that needs to be looked at. Like, another question I had, you got 45 parking spaces for employees, you got 69 buses. Could you explain reasoning on that?
All right, I'll, I'll, I'll... Basically, I think what John's system is, when the drivers pull in, they can either park in the 45 spaces or they can park where the buses are. They can pull out and park in those spaces. So there's actually more spaces than, than is required.
Usually, a school bus driver comes to work, and if, if they pull out their bus, they pull their car into their space. The reason why, for the extra 45 spaces that we have, it is a training facility. So NRT not only has several contracts in the state of Massachusetts to transport children, we, we also do a lot of training of, of people to get their CDLs. Last year, we put about 120 drivers on the road. This is going to be one of our training facilities.
Okay. And just a comment on the drainage system. Right now, basically, all this impervious area, it just sheds off. So any runoff, any pollutants it picks up, you know, it, it just goes into the system. Now, at least you'll have a swale, you're going to get some treatment there, and you're going to get some sediment. The swales are very flat, so you're going to get, you're going to get sediment removal there. You're going to go into deep sump catch basins, which have four-foot sumps in them. That'll be inspected regularly and cleaned regularly. So that's a secondary treatment, and then it'll go into the system. So I think overall, you're going to have, get an improved drainage system, all you have now.
I, I was under the understanding, though, that the, with the new drainage laws, that every drop of water on your property had to stay on your property. And you're saying that because it's just sheet running down into the street now, I think we're opening up a can of worms for future development coming in saying, "Well, this land drained into the street already anyhow, so we can just tie into the town's, and we're just going to bury the town's drainage system with private water."
Well, I think, I think the regulation is, what's going there, you're allowed to put what's going there now. So if you're putting, I don't know, 500 gallons into the system now, when you're done your development, you can still put 500 gallons. You can't put more. Any more that, any more that you create, you've got to handle on-site.
So, so you're going to be creating more when you put the building up, and you've got roof drains dumping into that as well?
Nope, nope, we're actually going to be...
This whole site right now, 80% of this site is paved. So what we're doing is where we're putting the building, there's pavement there now.
Yeah.
So the roof that's covering the pavement is, it's, we're replicating. Actually, we're giving, we're giving back. We're giving back some impervious pieces by putting the swales in. If this property wasn't paved, then you're right, you're correct. You have to look at the water that we are creating and shedding off. But right now, that water's doing what it's naturally doing. It's running off that property and going where it, where it goes. We're actually going to give it some direction.
Right.
And give it some treatment in that direction.
I get it. I just don't like it. And I, and I still think, and I'm going to look into it, I still think that the, the rule says it has to stay on the property.
So, so could I just, what I'd like to explain is, again, we did a property like this up in Newbury. It wasn't a brown filled piece of property, where, where we paved.
Yeah, please, name and...
Name, you know, all that before.
John McCarthy, John McCarthy, I'm, I'm president of NRT Bus, but I'm also the owner of JJ McCarthy Realty and Trust. When we did this property in Newbury, which is right next to Wetlands, we went in front of the town and we learned all about impervious, impervious. And when we decided that we were going to pave that lot, we needed to make sure that the water that was on that property had to stay on that property. Right now, you have a piece of property that has a cement slab on it, and about three acres, 2.8 acres, that is paved. That's just shedding water where it decides to go. What we're going to do is, we're going to give some back to you. We're going to give some of that, that, I mean, pervious property back, and we're going to get, we're going to give that water some direction. By raising that parking lot to meet the building and putting more fill on top of that cap, we're going to put the water where it needs to go and, and treat it the way, the way we think it needs to be treated. And, and, and also by the guidelines of the law, so.
Lastly, the, the other question I was going to ask. Oh. What time in the morning would, when you typically start, will all the buses be leaving?
They, they leave at separate times. Right now, routes, high school, I believe, is in at 7:15. So buses will leave approximately 6:20 in the morning, about, about the same time they leave.
How many, how many buses go out to, is this just for Chelmsford schools, or are you going to have buses leaving there to go to different towns?
No, I'm going to actually, I'm going to park some Lowell buses on that side, which is good, because you guys will reap the benefits of the excise tax of that. I'm sure Lowell, you know, is going to, ask me why the excise tax bill has gone down. So long story short, no, on that side, the buses that, that are at Lowell, that, on that side of Lowell, will, will leave out of that site, along with the Chelmsford buses. Right now, Chelmsford has 29 buses in town.
So it's roughly between 6:00 and 7:00 o'clock in the morning, you're going to be dumping 30-some-odd buses onto 110?
69.
It's, it's separate times. So some of those buses, some of those buses will, will leave to go to Lowell at 6:00 AM. You know, six, between, yeah, between 6:00 and 7:00 o'clock in the morning. 7:00 in the morning, the buses are all gone.
I'd like to, I'd like to give thought about maybe a traffic study being done to see what the impact's going to be on that, because that road's a mess now. And I can't imagine dumping...
30 buses?
40, 50 buses onto a road that you can't even move on now. I don't know how you're going to get out of there, to be honest. You could be sitting there all morning.
Talking about 110, you're talking about...
110, yeah.
So there's, there's a traffic light there. So, so that, that, so when you come out, Katrina Road's not a very busy road now.
Have you ever, have you ever sat at that traffic light, and you get about 30 feet, and the other one turns red, so everything's just bottlenecked and just stops?
Yeah.
Isn't that just a case of synchronizing the lights?
So it is, it is about so. So, so I run 300 buses in this area. I'm, I'm pretty adapted to the traffic problems of this area. Chelmsford is no, doesn't have a protected bubble. I mean, you guys have some pretty good traffic problems, which creates some challenges for the superintendent of, of Chelmsford as we either add a bus or delete a bus, you know. Again, buses coming out of that will certainly be visible coming out of there. But I, I believe, based, once we get underneath that bridge, that's the end of where the traffic usually is, because they get up on Route 3. I think it's a great place for, for, for a place like this to be going, because, again, that's where your traffic problems end, at that set of lights. There's a shopping center across the street, and they all get up on Route 3 and either head to, but they know that, we know they're not heading into New Hampshire, but they're heading to Boston. And there's a set of lights right there. We're taking a right, going into the bridge, going into, into Lowell. Or some of our buses will be getting up on Route 3 and trying to get on the other side of Chelmsford. We use Route 3 now to get the buses back and forth as quickly as possible. So I think it, it really is, I wouldn't put a site there if I thought it was going to create a, a time problem that would, would add more labor to what we're already paying now.
Okay. Great, that's all I got for now.
You're on.
I believe in the presentation, you, you said that actually you're going to reduce the impervious surface area by 5%? Is that...
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
And then, how long will the, do you have any idea how long the cleanup will take?
The remediation?
Oh, I'm sorry. So again, the Mass. development funding is 24 months. So we anticipate probably 18 to 20 months, because we have to really then complete all the final reports. Everything has to be completed within that 24-month period.
And then, you said some of the buses are going to go to Lowell, so obviously you have a contract with Lowell. Some of the buses go to Chelmsford. What happens in the event that you are not awarded the contract at some point in the future? What will, you continue to do the training on this site?
I'll sell the building. No, I'm only kidding. Listen, we've done a good job of keeping your rates down. We've had some competitors come in and, based on the way we operate, the way I believe that we, we do some collaborative transportation. Not only do I do your outside special needs, I do transportation. I also do your, your out-of-district. I've been doing this for about 30 years. You know, I know I don't look it, no, I'm only kidding. I've been doing this for about 30 years. My company started with one vehicle in 1988. We run approximately about 2,000 vehicles now. We do a good job at, at keeping costs down and, and making sure that we stay in the community. We combine regular transportation with special needs, which keeps your rates down. One of your contracts just went out to bid recently. They tested the market, and they realized that our philosophy in transportation is, is doing what it's supposed to do. Good service at a low cost. There is, there is a chance that we could lose a contract. We could lose, you know, special needs goes out and does not have to be awarded by 30B, which is Lowell's successful bidder. Special needs is exempt from that. Again, just the fact that we have such a presence in this area, we have Drakken, we have Lowell, we have Methone, and we, I can go on and on where we are, but we're running. On this particular area, this will be our fourth garage, fourth building servicing the Merrimack Valley. And we've been here in the Merrimack Valley since 2002, so.
When a bus needs service, would that be done on this property, or how's that work?
So it is going to be a maintenance facility. We don't do any major maintenance. The reason is, is because we, we don't want to tie up the mechanics as long. It's another dying trade. Mechanics, there aren't as many mechanics out there. So most of our vehicles are under warranty, because we keep a fleet fairly new. There's, I don't know if you've seen your buses out there, they're brand-new buses. So there's a place right up the street, it's called New England Transit. They do most of the heavy maintenance on the vehicles. We do oil changes, we do some brake changes, you know. We don't pull motors, we don't pull transmissions. We flush out, you know, radios, radiators if they need to be flushed out, but we do them with all the, you know, we also change oil. We also have waste oil heaters on the property. We burn our oil in, in our own buildings to keep our buildings warm, so.
Given this, the snow area, that, is that on the, on the, is that just a reserve area? Where, where's the snow storage? You mentioned something about maybe taking the snow off-site, or?
Well, we, I would hope I don't have to take it off-site. Not to say that, we take, you know, there are some properties that we do. So, no, we believe that, so what they're saying is, if we have a bad storm, I mean, if we have a bad year, that I would actually be able to move buses off-site to create more snow storage. One of the reasons why I, I had brought up the dumpster, the enclosure, the dumpster, the whole property's being fenced in. And, and my regulation of, of dumpsters being enclosed is usually so the public doesn't have access to that area. So our whole yard is going to be fenced in, and it's also going to be, on that side, we're going to have the slats inside. The only reason why I didn't want to put an enclosure in is because of the snow. I still plow. I'm still, you know, I'm the guy that's still out there and the plows with, with the other guys. And I know it can be a challenge, you know, you know, when we have to move snow, and there's things that don't move and try to push snow around. So the less things that we have that don't move on that property, the better off we are, and that's why we just figured we'd just fence in the whole area. That's why we thought maybe that we would not be able to have to enclose that dumpster, because it has a three-acre enclosure. It won't have access to the public.
I guess this is a question for Mike and Ed. Moving, moving any water over to Carrie's property?
Yep.
Is that by right, or is something more need to happen?
That's on my question list. It's not clear to me what kind of arrangements need to be in place, if any. Do you have any idea on that, Evan?
Yeah, the, the way the engineer described it is, and I think every engineer described it to you, is legally, they're allowed to continue and replicate or duplicate existing flows as well as rates.
Okay, so that's, that's what this is based on, then?
Correct.
Okay. There's your answer.
That's all I have.
And me?
Couple of quick things. Lighting plan. I see we saw, saw some lights. I don't see any lights on your building. I don't see a, a lighting plan.
It's, it's on there.
I don't see it.
I showed the lumens and all of that.
I saw the light fixtures, but I just didn't see the...
And I'm not seeing safety lights for the parking areas.
Yeah, we have a, we have a light post here, and then three, two, three, four. And then the lighting on the building is actually, one, two, three.
Okay, I see.
And I did submit a photometric plan. I'll pull it out if you guys would like to take a look at it.
No, that's all right, as long as there's a plan. I didn't see...
I see it in my package.
I'd like to see it, it's on my package.
And I don't see the, the lights that go on the building either. I just see the post lights. The other thing, I under, I've been a small business my whole life. My father had a, had a business. Water getting discharged into a brook. With my, we were in business from 16, the, the site was active from the late 1600s. I can't legally take and tell you how much we fined, but it wasn't cheap. Just parking equipment on the site. It was an EPA regulation that another contract, another business in this town has been hit, hit up with recently, with water being discharged off their site into a brook. His, his fine is well over six figures. I'm hoping the town, if we're going to be owning this thing, has taken some sort of, I can tell you who to talk to. It's not a very well-known regulation, and I know they're hiring individuals to go around and chase down companies for it, and you're not aware of it until it shows up at your door.
So, three of my sites are near a body of water, so we've been...
We were, we were there for, oh, that site was safe for over 200 years. They're, they're doing certain industries at a time and closing in on it. The, if I can remember correctly, the bill was actually passed in the late, in the late eighties. And this was actually, individual companies are going around. There's somebody in town here that's going through it right now. Figures over six figures. It'd be worth it to make a call, so I could just, if I could just address it.
You all know where I'm parked now. I've been parked there for the last 13 years, so...
I, I agree.
So, so hang on.
Log trucks, everything else.
So hang on for a second. The only difference between school buses and other equipment. So I'm also in the other equipment business. I also own a fuel oil company. I own RAF Fuel, which does their own wet hosing to NRT bus. I also own a, a small construction company. We, we do our own developing. We also, I also own a car that's inspected once a year by the state inspectors. School buses are checked four times, four times a year. If a school bus is leaking oil, it's downed by the state. On top of the state seeing it, on the state level, going in and physically making sure that the buses are safe, those buses are seen once a month by my mechanics. So, again, I've been, and I don't know what the laws were 200 years ago. I've only started doing this in the last 10. And I, I've felt pretty confident with the engineer that's stood by me. At this point, I, is it, coming into an area that could be sensitive, and, and I don't see this area being as sensitive as some of the areas that we are in already. We're right on the canal in Lowell. I don't know if you know the PV Street site. We're right on a marsh in Newbury, and it's surrounded by water. So, long story short, I, you know, we're abiding, based on how I pay this guy. He, he tells me what is allowed and what's disallowed, and based on, based on that. School buses are really clean. They're not regular pieces of equipment. Like the equipment that's parked in front of this particular site, which is cranes and vehicles that may never get inspected, that might be... that might be leaching or leaking into the ground. School buses are not, are not the same. They have a regiment that people look at.
All right, well, I'm just trying to give you a warning.
No, I appreciate it.
I know, I, I've hit Kyle once.
Yep.
Lighting plan?
Lighting plan, yeah, I've got that on the list.
All right.
Could I, just, I just wanted to show you the photometric light. This shows the lights on it. It's a little hard to see, but the, this is the building here, and we've got the one, two, three, and then this is around the site, so this, one, two, three, four.
And what type of fixtures are you putting on the building?
That's on the detail sheet.
I saw it closely, unless you're using the same fixture, just using the heads mounted on the thing differently?
Yeah, there it is there.
Yeah. So you're using this on the building as well?
Uh, yes. No, no, that's, that's the, that's the post light.
What are you using on the building?
Uh, actually, I believe that is the same.
Same head.
Yeah, it's the same head, right.
Same head.
Yep.
If it's not on here, if nobody's mentioned it, we like to keep it to four thousand Kelvin or less.
Yeah, definitely soft lighting.
It's not specified.
Soft lighting.
Henry, all done?
I'm all done.
Nancy?
Um, yeah, I've got a few questions. Evan, is this being submitted to Conservation Commission?
You went, I know you had a conversation with the agent.
Yes, we, we had a meeting with the Conservation Commission, I believe, a week ago. We submitted a request for determination. They approved it based on receiving an approval letter from the town engineer. So once, once the agent receives that, she said she will release the permit.
I'm having problems understanding sheet three. Is it your plan to pave the, repave the entire area, or are you covering up some areas with dirt and not paving, or? I can't read this drawing is what it comes down to. I don't know where the edges of the pavement are.
Actually, if you go to the next sheet. Now, all that hatched area, that's actually what's going to be paved.
So the area that's currently not paved will remain not paved?
Right, it'll be, it'll be surfaced with crushed gravel.
And the reason for that is what?
We didn't want to, we didn't want to increase the impervious area because that would trigger stormwater management regulations that we, we just don't want to have to go through. So we're, we're actually slightly reducing our pavement, and then that way we don't, we can apply it by just, basically just the town engineer's recommendations.
I see. Where is the driveway going in? Is that the entire property at this, at the cul-de-sac paved as a driveway?
Yes, yes, and then there's a secondary entrance right here.
Is this currently paved?
Yes, it is.
All right, and that's twenty feet wide?
Yes.
So I have concerns, and the concern that I have is that this is not currently a commercial This is vacant land. It's paved vacant land, but it's still vacant land. So to put a commercial building on here, a new commercial building, we're effectively changing the use.
No, it was industrial.
It's industrial?
Yeah.
All right, so to put a new industrial building on here, we're effectively changing it from what it currently is to put new construction in that includes a parking area for a lot of vehicles, and that's not the current use. So whatever drainage we currently have on this property does not include dealing with the runoff of a parking lot and the contamination that goes with the runoff for a parking lot. So while we may not be putting more runoff off this property than currently exists, we're now putting a contamination in that runoff that does not currently exist.
Can I address that?
Sure.
You have a piece of property right now that's dead. It's contaminated. You have nobody to clean it up until one of these, they put this deal together to have somebody come in and make sure that A, mass development would agree that we're going to bring jobs into the community and turn this into a live site. This site is dead. This site has some serious contaminants on it that the state is agreeing to clean up. It is paved. It's already a parking lot. The contaminants that are on that property right now that are about to be cleaned up by mass development need to be cleaned up. This property has been this way since nineteen eighty-five, doing, doing the town of Chelmsford, no service other than scratching peoples and figuring out what people are going to do with this. So they, they had an idea of how to deal with this property, and, you know, they got the state involved through Brownsville, and some engineers came together, and they, they got a developer that possibly would come in and, and develop this and change what's actually going on in that property today, which will service the community as a, as a site to create jobs, also get school bus parking, that where they're parked right now that really shouldn't be there, but there's no other parking in the town of Chelmsford. I think this site is perfect for what we're about to, and proposing to do with it. The commercial building that, that's not there, the slab still is. It's a very ugly site. I don't know if you've been there lately, but it looks, it looks like a desolate, you know, dead piece of land, which we're about to change the, and give it a facelift and make it as clean as possible. And then you have a, an owner of the property that's going to have to maintain the integrity and the, and testing of the wells, which we did, we just did it recently, just to see how the contaminants were working. And we know that the contaminants have already started to come down a little bit on their own. And above and beyond, the town no longer has any responsibility for this property, which right now all this responsibility lays on you. I believe based on the engineers and everybody that I've had involved with the remedies that they have brought before me, I believe that I'm willing to take a risk and change the face of this property. I hope that answered your question.
It certainly addresses my question, and I would like to say that I think this is an excellent use for this property. I'm looking forward to seeing this as a utilization of the property, but I am still concerned over the need to have a water treatment plan for the runoff from the, the bus and parking areas.
Again, so...
I think we've identified this as an item that the board wants some additional information. So I have two items written down on this. One is the legalities related to drainage into the town sewer system. That's a DPW issue, that's not an environmental issue. The other is the stormwater regulations and compliance with that. So my suggestion is between now and the next meeting, the applicant, working with the town engineer, the town LSB, and DEP can get together and will provide a report back to the planning board. I can tell you from, from personal experience, what started ten years ago as an economic development program, ten years later is essentially an environmental cleanup program. So DEP's been at the table, EPA's been at the table, many LSBs. If there were, if there were a better way, or a more direct way or a traditional way to deal with the stormwater, it likely would be proposed. I don't know the intricacies of the engineering, I think that's what will get reported back to the planning board. I think in some of Christina's memo, there are a couple issues that she recommended that maybe the applicant wanted to discuss with the board. Maybe that discussion resolves the issue where ultimately there's an agreement that certain types of reasonable and practical improvements are made, whether it's onsite or offsite. That may be the discussion that takes place between now and the next meeting.
Okay, well, that among others.
Evan, to that list, could you add the additional parking lot contamination in the runoff into the wetland area?
Yep.
Yep, okay. Very good. All set?
All set.
Okay, well, I'll get my two cents in. It occurs to me when you have a site like this, the last thing you want to do is dig a hole in it. You know, you just want it, which is why I completely understand why the best thing to do with the water is probably dump it into our system. Because any hole you dig, any, any infiltration, infiltration you try to do is going to risk kicking up a bunch of stuff you really don't want to have infiltrated into your water system. I can see that, okay. This is, well, I have a couple of more things that we'll discuss when we talk about what the next step is. You've mentioned a few, I have a few written down, but this is a public hearing, and it being a public hearing, I would like to open it to the public. Is there anybody here who wishes to address the board on this matter? Yeah, we'll get them, yeah. Sure.
My name is Brett Palmero, I'm the general manager. I'm the general manager at Chadwick Bay Ross, which is the abutting company to this property. I just, you know, want to be a good neighbor, but I do have some concerns that you've already started to ask questions about. One of my biggest concerns is what the impact of all the buses is going to be on the road, the traffic, the intersection, and I think, I just, I think it's a good idea, I would really like to see some kind of study done on what the impact is going to be from that amount of units going out. And I know that they're not going to go out one at a time, they're going to go out many at a time, and that, that intersection is really stressed already. Other than that, I know that, you know, we have, we have an onsite drainage system that we were, I want to say forced, we were...
Yeah, you were.
We needed to put that on to keep all of our water onsite, and we've been in business eighty years. So we had to update our own onsite leach system for all of our water so that it doesn't go in the street.
Yep.
And, you know, I just, I think that absolutely needs to be looked at as well, which I know is, is on, in the plan, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I don't see a whole lot more public out there, but if there's, if there are any invisible members of the public who would like to step up? Is that it? Okay, I'm going to suggest it probably behooves us to leave the, the public hearing open. But we should discuss what the next step is. First, let me take one more round, around the board, and see if there are any additional questions that have come up.
Yeah, two, and you don't have to answer it again tonight, but look at it. The way the parking is laid out, is there enough room for you, for the LSB to do their work? Are you going to be setting up any trailers, or is this going to be just ground injection into wells? So look at that. Oh, there you are.
Must drive.
So one thing I want to mention, and I don't think Mr. McCarthy mentioned, he also has retained an LSB, and we are going to coordinate the remedial injections and the installation of the injection wells and the groundwater monitoring wells with Mr. McCarthy's LSB, because we really want this to be very streamlined, any equipment that's stored temporarily, what have you. Certainly there'll be drill rigs, but most of that is more on a daily, weekly basis, but again, it'll be all coordinated.
Yeah, I hear you. I'm just, I've been there, done that myself personally in my companies.
Yes.
What I just want to make sure is you don't need the parking lot laid out a little differently so that you don't go in and find buses laying on your wells.
No, 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 and that's certainly something we're going to discuss in terms of making sure, for instance, any wells, because keep in mind, any wells that are installed that need to be maintained in the future, all of that design, the design of the injection wells, the placement of those wells, and the, and the monitoring wells, we'll be discussing that with Mr. McCarthy and his LSB as part of the whole design process.
Okay, good. All right, somehow we'll get a condition into the cover. Number two, nobody's brought it up, but I'm going to be the bad boy tonight. We have a thing in Chelmsford called a fifty-three G account.
Right here.
Are you going to talk about it?
Oh, yeah.
Well, go ahead, you'll be the bad boy.
Okay.
Can I ask another question first?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I did have another question. In that the mezzanine includes office space and a couple restrooms, why is it not considered a floor?
It's a mezzanine.
It's a mezzanine, yeah.
It's a mezzanine.
It's a mezzanine.
What it is.
Why don't you describe the building?
Yeah.
So, the reason why we call it a mezzanine is because that's exactly what it is. So, the garage, the second floor is only consisted of right here. This, these bays all have eighteen-foot ceilings.
Yeah, I'm just saying, they're high bays.
So, so again, we're not calling this a floor because if it was a floor, we, in the other buildings that are built, the floor would fill the whole length of the building, where this is just a dispatch station. So, we have an elevator that's going to go up, so, and then, and then the, the second floor is actually a whole floor that goes in. So that's why we call it a mezzanine.
Okay.
And I guess that's the correct term for it.
It is. Yeah, I, I don't know, I mean, the buildings I work in kind of have the same thing, is they, they have a second floor and part of the building is high bays, but that second floor isn't considered to be a mezzanine, so I'm wondering why. That's all.
I, I used to call it a second floor too, and then somebody corrected me when I started building, when they said that's actually a mezzanine, and it was the architect that told me it wasn't a mezzanine, so I didn't...
Three stories are acceptable, so it doesn't really matter one way or the other. I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a quick question for the abutter.
Yeah.
Yeah. If I could ask a quick question.
Sure.
You had mentioned traffic.
Yes.
How does that directly affect your operation and...
Well, I think it could, yeah. We, I'd just like to see what, you know, if we could study it. I think, I think there's, I mean, if they're gone during the day, it's not going to be a problem for us during the day, but I'm concerned with the amount of vehicles going up and down the road. The road's already not in very good shape to begin with, and...
It's true.
The, the intersection at the end of the day is going to be the big issue, not so much the beginning of the day, but the end of the day when everybody's coming back in. That, we have trucks that sit out there that can't get in because the traffic is so bad sitting right there at the light, and I just can't imagine what it's going to be like, you know, with a whole bunch of buses. And I'm not, not trying to, you know, derail anything, I just, I, I have concerns.
Yeah, we do too.
Did you have something to add, yeah?
School buses travel about four, four and a half hours a day. They're out in the morning, they're out for two, two and a half hours in the morning, and they come back. The, and then in the afternoon, they leave around one-thirty, which is not a heavy traffic time in that area, and they're usually back about four-thirty in the afternoon. Depending on the season... Depending on the season. So, most of those school buses do charters. So, I don't know what your operation hours are, I don't know what time you open up. I'm pretty sure unless you open up at, if you open up at eight o'clock, our buses are gone, they won't be there. They'll be coming back around 8:30, quarter of nine. There's a lot of field trips, again. Today I ran, in this area, I ran 84 charters. So, if, if that's the case, those buses aren't, they're not going to see that flow of traffic. We've never had a traffic study before, and that doesn't mean that this wouldn't be the first time. We have not impacted in any of the neighborhoods because of the buses, even in some of the residential areas that we are. I'm in a residential area in, in Drakeett. You know, the one thing about school buses is they have a pretty good patent, and we've, again, if I didn't think this was a good site, and I thought this was going to impact, I wouldn't be looking to park my buses there. I wouldn't be looking, trying to increase my labor to have drivers sitting out there waiting to get in. When I looked at that site, and I saw where the bridge was, I saw that that was the end of the problem, the traffic. Again, that traffic is backed up going into Chelmsford, it's not backed up going into Lowell. You know, the people that are coming from Lowell are going right up. That light does cause some concern, but our buses are out taking a right. And I believe that, you know, for the, for the short period of time that they're going out, I think, I think we're going to be able to fit into the, to that area well, so.
When they return at the end of the day, at 4:30, do they come back?
Some won't return, sometimes, someone won't return until nine o'clock at night, depending on where they went. So, you may have 20 or 30 of those vehicles that don't come back till nine o'clock at night, and they will, they'll have a key to the gate, which is what we do in Lowell, which, by the way, we're in a residential area in Lowell, I don't know if you know where PB Street and School Street is, there's houses across the street. We're good neighbors. We listen to our neighbors, we've done what we're supposed to do. They asked us to turn our buses around, because they didn't want to have the exhaust pipes facing towards the house, we did that. We've, you know, we do what we're supposed to do.
Okay. Good.
And we have, by the way, we have, we have 72 buses on that site.
Yep.
Yeah. Have you looked at the traffic at the intersection in the 4:30, 5 o'clock timeframe in respect to the traffic coming out of the towers?
The traffic coming out of the towers. So, again, 4:30.
That tends to create a gridlock in that area.
4:30, 5 o'clock, the buses that are coming home are home. If the buses are out beyond that, they're not going to be back at 5 o'clock.
Well, the, the gridlock over there tends to go from about 3:30 to 5:30, so.
Yeah, and that's not.
It could affect you, is all I'm saying.
Again, when, I sat in that parking lot a long time, I scratched man, I started working on this, I actually called Paul after the first bid went out, and asked him what was going on with the property. I called Paul, and that's what sparked the put out the second bid. So, we've been working on this for a while, about 14 months. I've sat in that parking lot a lot, kind of scratching my head, seeing if this was going to work, and I'm feeling pretty comfortable. Again, I don't know if, I, all I can say is I can keep referring back to Lowell, where I am in Lowell, and if you know that street, with the 72 buses that pull out of that street, going in both directions on School Street, we, we do very well there, and I think this intersection will handle this traffic just fine.
One other question for the engineer, and it's actually a request. When you come back, could you show the gates on your fence plan?
The gates?
Yeah, I'm not seeing any gates.
Sure. Will do.
Right.
Well, anybody else want to comment? None, I, before I go into my end of the first session discussion? Okay. Well, it looks to me as if we've, we've piled up a modest list of things that we'll need a little bit more looking at. Let me run down the list that I have, and we can determine if there's anything additional. First, there was a question about the handicap parking spaces, didn't sound like that was a big one. Secondly, the water department had some concerns about the adequacy of the main, and that, along with the fire hydrant question, probably needs to be resolved. The dumpster, I see your point on the dumpster. I'm not sure that we have the authorities, planning board, to, to relieve you of that requirement, but I think it may be worth some further discussions, because frankly, if the whole thing is going to be fenced, it certainly makes sense to me to not, you know, we're not creating a beauty site here, and the fence will, will limit view from the outside. So, maybe some more conversation there is in order, yeah?
Yeah, the note on that, I would say would be that a drawing that shows that it's entirely fenced and has gates might help your conversation on that point.
Yeah, the fence, yeah, the fence is, is showing around the property.
I'm not seeing gates on the fence.
Yeah, right, we'll have to show, we'll have to show the, I mean, the gates are going to pretty much be at the two entrances.
Yeah.
Well, what she, what she might be getting at is a, what is, chain link, whatever it's going to be, just show them a picture of it.
Spect on there.
Yeah.
Just for the board of health, you know, all I'm saying is they're going to.
To go to the board of health and, and try to make that argument there, you really want to be able to show your gates and that it is entirely fenced, because right now, you have periphery fence, but you don't have street fencing showing on, on this plan.
We're just trying to help you, not trying to, yeah.
Yeah. I mean.
All right.
As it sits, it does not show a complete enclosure, complete secure enclosure.
I think, I think we do show the enclosure.
What she's trying to say is, you can keep talking to us all night, you got to go to the board of health.
They're going to fix it. And they might like pretty pictures.
And show them, and show them where on your design it fully encloses it.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
I mean, I wish you luck with them, I mean, I think, I think that, I think that's a request that makes sense.
Yeah, they, they have their own regulations and powers.
Yes. And yes, well, never mind.
We're not going any further.
No, any further than that.
All right, now.
Have the right to do what they do.
Next thing up, we have this, this wonderful institution in Chelmsford called 53G, which involves a payment to the town based on number of parking spaces. Now, I can't say, as I've ever seen a case where I had to worry about whether it was a automobile parking space versus a bus parking space. And what counts. I'll leave that to Evan to interpret exactly what our bylaw means. But I believe 53G generally involves about $100, $100 a parking space. And.
For now.
Huh?
For now.
For now, there's some talk of raising it, so, so get in early. It's, you've got 45 spaces here, regular parking. Evan, what do you think about the bus parking?
We did this with the Nissan dealership, because they called it inventory.
They called it inventory, yeah, which.
So, I think.
I think that might be the argument.
I think one of maybe new news to the applicant.
It is new news.
Figured it might be.
Can I give you a, can I give you a little? Okay.
I don't think car dealerships, or Demulus, or any of those companies are going to be paying excise taxes on those buses, on those vehicles that are going to be parked there. You guys are receiving a, listen, usually when I, when I, usually when we come to town, and we find a site that we're coming to, towns are usually happy that we come, because we give them some revenue that, that they use, and really not looking for anything in return, other than the fact that you're going to get about $120,000 a year in, in excise tax. Again, we're now then going to start paying taxes on that property. I would ask the board at this point, if they're going to look at charging me $100 a parking space on top of that, you're not even doing that to me now down at the, at the rink. I pay you about $1,500 a year for that. That, that, that being said, with this parking lot, I believe that with these excise taxes that are paid to the town, I think you're going to be compensated well and beyond of what, what you would get for the, you know, for the inventory parking space.
Well, I think, I think that's a fair argument for the bus parking spaces, and, and I think the, the rationale that that's really in space for inventory, it's not parking in the classic sense, I think makes some sense. That still leaves us with a 45 spaces.
And let me explain the 45 spaces, so can we tell them why we went from 26 to 45?
I think that, so the calculation, the required spaces is 25. I think we added extra spaces.
So, so hang on, so, the school buses aren't the only ones that are parking there. We also have these little minivans that are actually paying excise taxes to you guys. So, originally, it's not just the employees that are parking there, it's also, I don't know if you see all those little white vans that run around here.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
So, that, we left some of those parking spaces for those vans, so, just, just to give you a heads up. So, the employees park, the employees park in their parking spaces, where the, where the buses go. We do have about 10 to 15 parking spaces for employees of that building, or students that are coming and going. The other parking spaces was me saying, "Hey, by the way, this will be great parking for some of the little vans that we keep in-house." And again, we do that right now in Lowell, and they're all parked all over the place, and we just thought this was a great way to absorb some of my, my headaches over on, on PB Street.
All right, well, that, that gives some clarification, and, and it may make, it may be a rational argument here for cutting the number down from 45 based on that.
Let me point out, because he's not familiar with the regulation, this is a one-time charge.
Yeah, it's only a one-shot.
It's not an annual fee, this, and the money goes to sidewalks and traffic improvement in the area. Like, if all of a sudden, we find out we got a mess at the top of Glen Avenue, and we got to do stuff.
Gives us a little something to do with it.
We dip into that account to do some of that.
We call that a sidewalk fee in Middleton. I'm building, I'm building condominiums in Middleton, and they did the same thing, they said, "Hey, would you give us $20,000 to the sidewalks?" No, 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 just, so, and we did that, you know, we were able to do that. What I'm saying to you on this site is, is what I would like for you to consider, that the revenue that's coming into the city, into the town, because of what this site is going to be, that you would consider that.
Sure, just so you know, a couple of years ago, we did dealership, we were arguing over four, almost 400 parking spaces. Payment of 40, almost 40 grand.
Right.
So, we came to some terms with that.
Okay.
So, our chairman is talking now about.
25. 25?
20, 25 or 40, whatever, whatever the little number is. That's, I'm just pointing out, I'm going to leave it there tonight. Going to leave it there tonight.
Yeah, and you might, you might want to consider, to think about the allocation of these spaces, and how many might be vans, how many are, your required parking, you said was 26?
25.
25. That's, it may make sense to, to present it to us that way, as 25 parking spaces, and everything else is, is storage for, well, I wouldn't call it inventory here, but it's.
Maybe it's just hit me, because the superintendent asked for $25,000 for the sign that.
We're not going to give you.
At McCarthy Stadium that I just paid for the last three years, so, you know, I just, wait a minute, let me, let me leave my wallet.
We won't take a big dent.
I had to say that. I'm only kidding.
And, yeah, the final thing here, we've, we've had a bit of discussion about traffic. The obvious pinch point is the light on 110.
Yep.
What degree, if, if, if we were to look at some kind of traffic study, what, to what degree would we go here? What do we, what would be needed typically in a situation like this?
So, I mean, you can certainly do a traffic study, but what are you going to do, what are you going to do with the results and recommendation?
Yeah, I don't want to.
The pinch point is an existing pinch point.
Right.
You know, site specific, it's own industrial, this, this easily could have been a warehouse distribution site.
Yeah.
Which would have trucks coming in.
With 18-wheeler trucks coming and going 24/7. It's own, it's own industrial.
It is own industrial, true.
Which was one of the.
But if it was that, we would still be looking for a traffic study, Evan.
You'd be, you'd be talking about traffic.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I don't think. We're not looking for a 30-page study here, we're looking for a couple-page study that addresses the peak hours of use and the expected.
You were presented that.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, in this case, I think the, the owner, operator knows his business inside and out, probably better than ITE. I'm not even sure ITE is going to have a good bus terminal.
No, they probably don't, that's not a usual use. Well, you know, it, it strikes me, because I know that that light is a problem spot. Now, we, I guess, who owns the timing on the light? Is that the state, or is that us?
Town-controlled.
Town-controlled.
What, what Steve will tell you.
Yeah.
Is that the town's priority is the main line. The town is never going to give priority to Glen Avenue.
That's real.
So, it's the main line.
Okay.
That, that signal's coordinated in with the state highway signals.
Which, which, which are the state highway signals?
The ramps.
The ramps, okay, that's, that's the big signal at the ramp.
Yep, so, as the applicant said.
So, they're locked in with that, actually.
I think the applicant stated that was his primary due diligence. He's making a judgment call based upon his operations. But there's, there's really, there's nothing that can or will be done, regardless of whether it's a NRT busing, or if it's something else.
So, I think the question is, because these vehicles are, are concentrated into short periods of time, will backing up these vehicles onto Glen Ave, or backing up these vehicles on 110, trying to turn across traffic to get onto Glen Ave, cause any safety issues? And I think that's the, I think that's the only question that we've gotten.
You say safety issues, I mean, other than backing up and queuing.
Yeah.
What do you mean by a safety issue?
I think it's a safety issue, I think it's more of like a gigantic inconvenience for anybody that lives down there.
Well, I think it is that.
In the morning, and they're going to be sitting, they're going to have to get up a half an hour earlier every day, I guess.
Well, here, here's what I have to say. School busing between 6:00 in the morning till 9:00 in the morning is an inconvenience to anybody to get stuck behind a school bus, but we, we have to abide by certain laws. And in this particular town, if you don't have sidewalks, I mean, if you're stuck behind that bus, you get stuck behind that bus, it's, it's, it's an unfortunate. But again, I think, based on the operations, in my operations, I, I'm going to have a less impact on that, on that intersection than, again, if a, one of the other applicants that I know that, that put in a bid was a mattress factory. Who knows how that was going to impact you guys, with trucks coming and going in and out of that? Yes, there is, there will be a period of time that somebody's going to get stuck behind a school bus. There is, there's, there's no way around it. The good thing is, is that we're not picking up any student on Glen Road. So, so we're not using our stop signs, we are going to be at the mercy of that light, which I believe I'm willing to be able to get through without having a, a big impact in that neighborhood. Again, traffic's all backed up on the other side of that light, they're not, we're not going left. I'm not saying that no buses will go left, because there'll be some students on that side of town that get picked up. The majority of those buses are going right.
Going right, okay. Well, okay, it may, it might be worth some conversation with the town DPW, because there may, there may be some adjustments on lights in terms of right turning and preferred, and preferred right turning out of there, that, that might make some sense. That I can't say. All right, so.
Can I comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
I've sat in Demulus' parking lot for hours, over years, as I'm waiting for my wife. Part of the problem.
I've seen him there.
Part of the problem is, the light on Glen Avenue works nice. The light at the end of the ramp has more cycles than the light on Glen Avenue, so every once in a while, you hit them, like about once every 10 minutes. That, I'm going to say the light at the bottom of the ramp is either six or eight separate cycles, or separate patterns it goes through. It's not just, you know, cross, and the two cross, and that's where the big problem comes in, is that you can never time the state light and the town light, and everything backs up. And when it backs up. And when it backs up, it backs from Glen Avenue all the way down, almost to the Best Western in the afternoon. And that starts around three o'clock. So just so you understand the depth of the traffic problem, and our DPW, we've gotta, not for you, but we've got to address that at some point.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we may have to do some work there.
Well, if you can give some hints to Lowell, I'd like to... No, the only reason why I'm saying that is, is because of the, the traffic situations that we have in Lowell. Again, I've sat there, I looked at it. I'm, I'm not saying that that, you know, that there isn't a consideration to some traffic there. I, I just looked at it. And again, I just have to tell you, my bus is sitting in line, equates to more labor. A bus driver that's gonna have to sit there is certainly gonna come walking into me, and everything's done by GPS, is gonna come walking in and say, John, do you realize since we've moved that, you know, I've added a half hour a week to our, to our time? You know, over a hundred and eighty days times twenty-nine, that starts to add up. So that being said, I did take into consideration. And if, if this was an area that I really didn't think this site was gonna work, I wouldn't have put a bid on the site.
Does that intersection have a turning arrow onto Glen Ave?
No.
No, doesn't.
I don't think it does.
I think it's just a...
When you're coming down, when you're coming down 110 towards Lowell, when you get to the Glen Avenue light, there's three lanes. One lane is into Market Basket, and one lane is straight ahead or Glen Avenue. But you, the only arrow at the Glen Avenue light is into Market Basket.
So there is no turning arrow coming when, for, for traffic coming from Route Three or from Lowell, and turning into Glen Ave?
No, I was telling you, as you go towards Lowell, when you come from Lowell, there is a turning arrow...
Into Glen Ave?
Into Glen Avenue.
No, there isn't.
I don't think so.
There's a lane, there's no light.
I don't think there's, I don't think there's a light.
Right, but there's no light. She's asking about the light.
Oh, okay, but there's two lanes there.
I understand there's lanes, but I'm concerned that if there is no turning light, that intersection, it will be extremely difficult to turn left onto Glen Ave with multiple buses coming in, because the through traffic will block that turn.
It already is.
I know.
It already is.
I, I understand that.
And then you got the guy with the gas station there, when he has a sale on gas, that's backed up all the way down.
And that just backs up. That just backs up.
But we're not trying to discourage...
And I realize, you know, Chelmsford, Chelmsford is a unique town. I mean, you have Route Three, and you have 495, and wherever there's an accident, you know, that's where your traffic backs up. I've been dealing, you know, the, the thing is, I'm not new to your town. I've been doing business in your town for the last fourteen years. I've been here for a while. We've had a great relationship. And, and again, not to say that you all bring valid points, you know, I believe that I, again, I looked at the site, and I'm feeling pretty comfortable that we're gonna be able to address the, the challenges that we, that you guys are bringing up tonight.
Okay.
So is this something that DPW would need to look at in terms of the light?
Yeah, I think a conversation with DPW is in order, because there may be some simple things that can be done. All right, you've got a list of things that will need some addressing and looking at.
Jack has a homework project.
You got that? You got the list? Okay. I think, at this point, what we want to do is, is continue for...
May twenty-third?
May twenty-third. Is that doable by you guys? Can you, can you get through all of these things by May twenty-third? I would hope, although you can never guarantee, but I would hope that...
I'll have to tell my grandson I can't make his baseball game, but I guess I will have to be here.
You might have to do that. For this one, you might.
I'm only kidding, I'm just kidding.
All we can do is delay it.
Yeah, with, with a little bit of luck, we, I would hope we could clear this up in one more meeting.
Want a motion?
Well, we have two things. First, we have to continue the public hearing.
Yeah, give you a motion for that.
Okay.
Why make a motion to carry a public hearing for, I lost it here, planning board, planning board, well, it just says twenty-seven Katrina wrote.
Okay, that's funny. We have a second?
Yep.
Okay, move second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, got that. And then...
That's all we need.
That's all you need.
That's pretty much all we need for the moment. Okay, see you in a couple of weeks?
Thank you.
Maybe we can sort it all out.
Maybe between now and then you go to board now.
Yeah, I think that's on the list.
That was on their list to do.
Yeah, that's, that's on the list. Next on our, does anybody want to take a break before we...
We talked enough about drainage, that sounds good.
All right.
I'll take a break.
And then we have a nice slideshow. Keep it on your own site.
Okay.
Everybody here? Christina, you're on.
Good evening. Christina Papadopoulos, town engineer. I've heard Evan bring up the topic of a possible work session, and he asked for some ideas on topics that we could discuss. So I sent him ideas, and he said, why don't you present those ideas? So that's why I came up with several ideas for possible work session topics. My intention is not to discuss them tonight, but merely to present them. Whether you choose to pursue them as work session topics or not, is up to you. The first would be the fifty-three G contributions, which came up tonight. It's currently at a hundred dollars per parking space, and should that be increased? So, one of the possible ideas for that is, it could be a tiered system, and it could be based on the number of parking spaces equals a certain dollar amount, and it could either go up or down depending. This is something that you may wish to call other towns to see what they're, what they're doing, and how their fee structure is. And that would be up to you. The second topic would be compact parking spaces, and whether there should be a certain percent of spaces allowed to be compact, or whether we want some kind of guidance document on that, or some kind of encouragement, or incentive, or leave it as is. Other towns definitely do have regulations on that, or include that in their regulations, and if that's something that you wish to look into. The next is electrical vehicle charging stations, and whether there should be, whether there should be any requirement for those. That came up in discussion somewhere along the way, and just wanted to present it to you again, whether you're interested in it or not. And private street construction standards. Those are currently, so the private street construction standards were made in, twenty years ago. So those were created in nineteen ninety-eight. Whether we want to look at those again, specifically, the fire department has a new standard minimum road width of twenty feet. So our existing width for a two-dwelling unit is eighteen feet, so we probably should change it so that they match. And what's the other thing? Is whether we should require a bond for the full construction of roadways. Currently, it's not set up that way. I believe it's something around ten thousand for a bond. However, three roads in the last ten years have not been completed. So that's just to give you perspective on, this is something that would make the DPW's job a little bit easier, if there was a bond for the full amount of the road. And lastly, the stormwater requirements, they're changing. As of July first, two thousand and eighteen, we are expecting a new MS four permit. That is the permit that allows the town to discharge stormwater into the public waterways of the, of the US. And those new requirements will require the town to create a new bylaw. You discussed a lot of stormwater issues tonight, and whether some of those you wish to incorporate into some, some guidelines, or something else.
Good.
Topics of discussion, whether you're interested in them or not. Any questions?
No, that's a good set. And actually, it almost strikes me that the most pressing of these may be the stormwater requirements.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
They have a lot of changes coming?
Yes.
There is.
Do we know what they are?
Currently, it's under litigation, so...
Oh, boy.
So we don't know when it's coming either.
So we're supposed to start in two months, bud?
There's, yeah, so we're, we're all, you know, expecting some news, whether we're going to, be expected to meet those, the new requirements in July, or whether they're going to put it off for another year. It's already been put off for a year, because it was supposed to start July first of two thousand and seventeen, but it got put off for a year. So we're, we're still waiting to hear back from them. There will be some changes, for sure. Specifically, requirements in the bylaw that, that they have now may change with the, with the new permit that they issue. I don't know, but it's just, it would be great to have some input, which way that, you know, the board feels that they, we should be going with stormwater regulations, so that when we create these bylaws, it's consistent.
If I might add, if you could give us a bullet point of the major changes...
Yeah, we're gonna need that.
That would be... Oh, I, I would be happy to, under a work session, I could come, I could talk about stormwater forever. So, yeah. And, and right now, we don't exactly know if those changes are going to stand July first, or if they're gonna change. So, without, I don't want to confuse everybody.
So, so I would like to have a work session and have Christina present an overview of the changes...
Yeah.
With information on which of those changes are currently being contested, and which are not being contested, because that gives us an idea of the ones that are, are more likely to go through, and those that we may not want to take action on at this time, because they might not become law, you know? But it, it seems to me that the ones that are not being contested, it's not a question if, it's a question when.
Yeah.
The ones that are being contested are ifs, and, and I would be very hesitant to do it, take any action on them until...
We went through a whole big stormwater thing not that long ago, and it all got set aside. I think we should wait until we have some definite, what they're gonna do. Hopefully, it's coming to a head shortly, we'll have an answer, whether it's gonna start this year, or maybe they'll continue it in another year, you never know.
I agree.
Hopefully, they will, yeah.
I agree. I'd rather, rather wait until we get a final answer on, on things, before we start changing things. But just to give you a heads up, sort of, that it's coming.
I think it would be useful to understand...
Okay.
What, what the impacts are, and then decide how long we postpone action.
What I'd add to that is, I might, if there's anything, I'm not reopening the other discussion. If there's anything that we should have in our final decision, about what we talked about earlier than that. If you could give us a note, or say, or a letter, or point out to us what we should have in that final decision.
Okay, I, I do...
I know you sent us the letter, but...
Yeah, when I send you the letter, those are things that definitely need to be read into the record. However, I try and hash out the smaller things with the, with the engineer beforehand.
Okay.
Today, his, can I speak about today?
I want to do it that way.
So what he presented to you was different than what we had discussed. I'm not surprised.
All right, well, let's, that's...
And that happens.
Yeah, we're given another two weeks, and we'll, we'll revisit. That's part of the reason we, we carry these things forward a couple of weeks sometimes.
So we do need to make sure that the department letters are applicable to the version that we're reviewing.
Yeah, that's true. I don't think there's a lot to worry about there, but there are small details at the corners. Okay, well, we'll, we'll deal with that in two weeks. But I do think the idea of a work session, or even a couple of work sessions, because we also have...
We have other topics.
We have the master plan. It's about time to start talking about the master plan. And I had a good conversation with Evan, actually, yesterday.
And we need to finish up historical preservation.
Right, we need to finish up historical preservation, and we need to get ourselves on alternate. So we have a number of, of topics that are good fodder for a work session. Now, what...